Yeah, so I want to talk to you about what do we mean, what do we take, and really answer any questions that you guys might have about it. Because I do know it, I know it really well. It was brought to the governor seven years ago. When I started, the governor's advisor came to my office, and I can tell you what I've seen. He came to Littleton, and when he presented it, we had a business there, Gen Foot, we still have them. The owner of Gen Foot, I'm going to tell his story real quick. I can't do it justice because, you know, he was involved in it. But basically, he had an employee who had a drinking problem. She came in, and, you know, they knew she had a little bit of a problem. Somebody complained that she was drinking on the job. He had to take her into, to get a breathalyzer, she blew a big number. He had to fire her on the spot. He fired her on the spot, she went home. Six months later, she drank herself to death. So, when he heard about this initiative, he realized if he had, if he had something to help this individual, she might still be alive. If he had that resource. This is that resource. This is the resource that can not only save lives, but also change a community. So what happened in Littleton, he got very passionate about it. The word spread, we got it out there. And pretty soon, we had a whole bunch of recovery-friendly workplaces. And we had a recovery center. And we had a police force that was progressive and really on board with the recovery movement. It grew into a real, a real movement in Littleton. It's not perfect there. I mean, it's not like things don't happen. They've had their struggles, they continue to. Mostly because drugs right now are more dangerous than ever. There's no safe experience. There's, there's no plant-based drugs anymore. I mean, there's still marijuana, but as far as, you know, opioids, and they're not coming from the poppy seed anymore. They're coming from chemicals. They're being mass-produced in chemicals. Some of them are mixed crudely. And when that happens, sometimes you get lethal doses. So, that problem is very prevalent. And how do we combat it? You know, many different angles. This is one angle of support in the community. One angle where you can, which a lot of companies already do, they support their employees. If you, if I was working for the town and I went to my supervisor and said, "I have a drug problem, I have an alcohol problem." If I thought they were going to fire me, I wouldn't go. I need to feed my family. But if I thought they would support me and help me, and if... You really don't know sometimes. Sometimes you don't know how they're going to react. If you don't know how somebody's going to react, you don't go there. So, what this program does is it lays it out in clear fashion that if you come to us with a problem, we'll do what we can to help. We'll do, we'll support you in recovery. What that means is not up to the recovery-friendly workplace. What that means is up to the entity, whether it's a business, a town, or whatever. There is no mandate on policy. Like, we would never say you have to allow people to smoke weed if they're working in a machine shop where fingers can come flying off. No, that's, that's not what this is about. This is about supporting individuals who have the disease of substance misuse. So, number one, it's not a matter of whether it's here or not, it is here. You know, if you have a workforce, the statistics show if you have a workforce of 100 people, 25% of them are struggling. These days, who knows what the number is? That's a, that's a round number. But it's here. And what we can do is let people know that we support them. When you support an individual, from what I've seen and what I've learned, this, first of all, this initiative has taken on, taken off like crazy. It's now going all across America. It started in New Hampshire, and it's become a nationwide movement. They're actively working on it around the country. What it can do is it can change stigma, it can change communities, it can really help an individual if they're struggling. They can get the help. They can come back, even better employee. It can strengthen the employee-employer bond. So imagine, I'm struggling, I go to my boss and I say, "I have a problem. Can you give me help?" "Yeah, okay, well..." "Sucks, because we're going to miss you, because you're a great worker and you know your job, but we're going to send you a 28-day program." "Go to the program, you come out, you find some sober living or whatever. You find a way to stay sober, you come back." How are we going to look at that employer? Are you going to look like, "They saved your life." How's it going to look at you? "You saved me money, because now I don't have to rehire somebody and train him to become the great worker that you are." And not only is he valued, he becomes more trustworthy. You know, that's what we see. You know, it strengthens that bond. So, it's an incredible thing. It's an incredible, easy process. Just real quick, if you decide you want to do this, Mia just went through the process. Took a long time, but it's very easy. You, you send an email to the governor. The email gets kicked to me, or to our team. Somebody picks it up. And basically, we come in, give you this packet, and go over the orientation with this packet right here. This lays out everything. I'm not going to go through all this right now, obviously. But I would come in, let you know what's going to be done. Pretty much, if I came in and did an ARCAN training for you all right now, that could be your first year-long task. You want to get your one training a year at least. But we can also tailor it to whatever you want. Right now, we're tailoring it to a couple of different organizations to give them what they need. I recently became the recovery-friendly advisor for the North Country. So, Northern Grafton, Coles County is my territory. We've had good success, so I'd be the person that you would deal with. Me and my colleague, Thomas Krykowski, he's more the reporting, more the data reporting, the stuff I don't like to do. I like to do this. I like to be in person, talking to people. So, I'd be the person you talk to. You know, if you need something, you come to me. If you have any questions, you come to me. It opens you up to a bunch of resources. Not that I wouldn't give them already. You know, if any of these guys come to me, "Greg, we need this, we need that," I'm going to do it. You know, it's my job for the consortium. So, I want to give resources out to everybody. And, yeah, you'd be connected in a way, it's kind of a level above just being here. You'd be connected to a lot of these resources. We also hold a once-a-month, we just started this, a once-a-month meeting because Rabbit and me go to every recovery-friendly workplace, because there's so many of them in the North Country. We have a meeting where you can show up, if you want to show up, and ask a question, come on in. If you want to show up and request a training, come on in and join me virtually. If you want to come up and just see what's happening, going on, feel free to sit in. If you're good, you don't have any questions, you don't need anything, don't show up, we don't want to waste your time. It's very practical, it's one of the most no-brainer things that I've seen. And it's gone, it's, it's growing every day. In this community, recently, two recovery-friendly workplaces, I don't know if I got to share with you guys, but Albershawn Hardware has signed on. They wanted to become a recovery-friendly workplace, not just the one here, but the complete one. And Raise Electric just signed up, or not signed up, but just sent a letter of intent two days ago. So, I recently, I just followed up with them today, and hopefully they get on. We keep building. Berlin City Auto is a part of this, as well as the Chevy dealership. Chad and, Chad Crane and Randy Stewart are both, you know, part of this as well. They recognize that their employees might be struggling, and we're just here to offer help. So, I mean, I don't know, I kind of rambled a lot. The coffee kick did good. But I'll be happy to take any questions. If you guys have questions, I would like to answer.
So I, thank you. I talked to Mia about this, and got her some of my questions answered. Just a little story from my background. 2002 in Massachusetts, I had a situation with an employee similar to the fact that, and you described when you started, and was just reminded of each other, with a workplace alcohol issue. And it was discovered, and we did not want to terminate the employee, but we wanted to get her help. And between myself and the union staffer, we did a lot of scrambling. And I'm glad that we did it, because I heard so many non-success stories in my past in Massachusetts. This one was 100% success story. We did exactly what you had mentioned. We got her in with 28-day program. We worked it out, she came back to work. And I used to ask, because I left that community and went to work in an adjoining community. Every time I'd go over there, I'd talk to people from that town, and ask, you know, how the person was doing. And they said, "Great, she's probably one of the best employees that we have." She has since passed away, but of old age. But it was a success story. But we were lost. We didn't know what to do. I can't support this more, especially after hearing that story that you explained to me. I can't support this more. Really, it's, that story needs to be told. Because I also worked in a community that ignored an issue, and it had a similar result. Because the person left the workplace intoxicated. And they weren't given any support. And they died in a motor vehicle crash. So, similarity, that's what just sparked this. And we had a discussion internally amongst staff when this came up. And we're in our hiring processes already looking at our, looking at people that are in the recovery process. And had hired people prior to my arrival that are in the recovery process also. My only concern was, which Mia had talked about, we still need to retain the discretion that if someone is in the recovery process, but there's other aggravating factors, to use a legal term, we sometimes may have to say no to hiring that person. Not because of the substance issue, but because of the underlying aggravating issues, which Mia affirmed to me that there are no restrictions. So, yeah, and it's basically more of a networking group, which I think is great. So, I couldn't support this anymore.
Thank you. And, yeah, as far as the policy goes, no dictation of policy, but also support of policies. If you're unclear about a policy, you know, if a situation, like an aggravating situation, if you want to delve in further to that, we're a resource to say, "Hey, how do other companies handle this?" You know, that's a valuable resource for you to think about your liability. And nobody wants to compromise anybody's liability at all.
Yeah, no, I couldn't support, I can't support it anymore.
Yeah.
I was going to comment also on the, not having to change policy. And I've been, I've been with Greg in the past on some of these conversations. And I think if we're going to ask our businesses, our community, to help us with this issue, with this problem, that we should lead by example and be part of this program.
And, Leo, it's a great point.
Yeah, thank you, Aaron. I have two questions. One, are you, how are you going to do an education program for the public regarding this? And secondly, is there a way of identifying businesses, such as using a decal on the door, so that the public is aware that this business is part of the...
What's that?
You can show them ours and play.
Yeah.
Coles County Family Health will be announcing and be, will be awarded.
Yeah, there's this.
Like, are you talking like that's next to a little declaration?
But there's also a window claim. There's a window claim that... Yeah, it has this logo, and it sticks on your window. And I have many of those, and I love handing them out, because, you know...
Okay, now, how do we educate the public?
How do we educate the public? That's a great question. We can schedule trainings. My area is public education, so, you know, that's what I do. You know, I'm a prevention specialist, I'm a certified prevention specialist. So, how do we educate the public? Through, there's a lot of ways. I mean, obviously, through social media is a big way. I created a video for the Resource Center here. People know that that's there, so...
There are different ways of doing it.
Yeah, but if you get a group together, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to train anybody to get, any, any sector of the public. I mean, I think that's the hardest part, right? It's like getting the right people to get the right, to get the message.
We could pick a topic. If there was something you wanted to learn more about. Or if there was, like, stigma, we could do something. Stigma, because stigma is a big thing. Education for staffers and the public, right? So you do a topic, and have a warm, you do what you call a lunching runs, but...
Yeah, we, you know, if we have a...
We could snack in there.
If we have a... Thank you. I mean, if the school come here.
I would volunteer, I would be, I would volunteer my time on, on the educational part, with Greg and Helen.
Sure, sure. If you wanted to open up a hall and fill it with people for an education, now, for stigma, I mean, that, that would be wonderful. We have done, we had Sam Quinones. He was, Sam Quinones wrote the book Dreamland and the Leesons. Yeah, he came up to Colberg, we hired him to come to Colberg and speak. And I'd love to have him speak to this community. I think we talked about that before. He talked about innovative and creative ways to address the problem that we have. And not the old methods, because they're not working.
I've heard of him from Commissioner Ray Gorman.
From what?
Commissioner Ray Gorman.
Yeah.
Yeah, he talked about him very highly, so...
Yeah.
But, I mean, I can go on and on, but thank you for being...
No, no problem, my pleasure. And when it comes to public education, however we can do that, I think it's a vital part of it. And however we can structure it and do it, I'm 100% in. We have plenty of great champions and people up here. You know, it just takes that initiative of who wants to do the training and where do we do it. I learned that we can get anything done, especially in Berlin. I think over the past two years, we've, we've done a lot. There's a movement going on here. There's a real, there's a movement. I mean, there's still the problem, but I saw the Combs with Cops the other, the other week. It was like over 100 people there. There was nothing here like that before. I mean, there, there are people working on it, but an event like that was really inspiring to me, to see everybody come together and a recovery movement. My friend in Littleton calls it a recovery epidemic. And that's, that's the movement that they had, and that's what we want to bring here as well. So people feel safe to come to recovery events, too. They feel safe and feel like they want to get into recovery, so that they're not alone, because we all want to have, we all want to be connected. Thank you. Yeah, no problem. Anybody else?
One way we can get it out is, we're going to eventually televise all of our meetings. We're just finishing up. We have the system, we have the cameras.
Oh, great.
We have some software issues we have to overcome to get it on our website. We're going to televise them, so that could be another outreach if we do. I don't want to schedule it, but let's say periodic visits, right, here with your staff, to our work sessions. It goes out, the meeting's broadcast live, and it stays on the city's website and archived in perpetuity, so...
I love that. I think everything, even the Sam Quinones event, I video, I, I do video editing stuff, audio, podcasting. I videotape everything, and I archive it. So, and as much as you can get on YouTube to have it there, the better.
The Chamber of Commerce also owns a radio tower, which allows us to promote nonprofits with a 30-second ad for a month. So if you could connect with the director of the Chamber, you know, let her know that someone here referred you and that you want to try and present everything. You give us the writing, and the radio just kind of puts it out next thing on the web.
That's great. What station?
The North Conway, I think it's 98.43. So it kind of runs in this local area, the Conway.
Got you, thank you. So connect with Rowan Chamber.
Yeah, I'll give, I'll give you the contact.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Corson?
Yeah, and she's connected to the Greenwich and Abbey Way. So I think, but I'll definitely take it.
How does this work interactively with the current EAP that we have? I know there are potential resources there. Are these additional resources? Are these resources that are also in there? Or is it just sort of a joining the two forces to pull up and...
It's a really good question. Supplemental.
Yeah.
Supplemental. And a little more specific to this problem. The problem of substance misuse and even behavioral health. So, yeah, it's not replace the EAP, but definitely supplement, that's it. And work together. You know, if you're not getting something from your EAP that you need in this realm, you come to us, and hopefully we can provide it.
It's an additional resource.
An additional, totally, yeah. And then free, you're probably paying for the EAP, right? You don't pay for us.
If I could add this to it, it's also a local resource, you know. A lot of these EAPs are, you're going to a portal or a 800 number that's, you know, somebody from afar that, you know, doesn't look and feel and sound like somebody local, and there's apprehension there, understandably.
This, and this is local, right? This is, I'm tied to it, you know. So, I really believe in it, and I've been doing it for seven years.
Is this substance misuse only, or is this behavioral health as well?
Substance misuse mostly. But I think, you know, when we talk about behavioral health, that covers mental health and substance misuse. So, more substance use disorder, but not, we can't really separate the two. You know, we used to be able to say it's substance use. Used to be able to say it's mental health. Well, the substance misuse is causing adverse mental health.
Correct.
The mental health issues are causing people to use substances. So, while we don't necessarily divide them, you know, we do, this is kind of focused on substance misuse. But, you know, if you have a mental health issue, like we're doing a motivational interviewing, I'm not sure if you know what that is. Some people might know, some people might not. But I think that covers more than just substance misuse. You know, it's identifying and dealing with a population that might have some mental health issues. So, I would say nothing's really off the table as far as that goes, but, you know, a little more heavy towards the substance misuse. That's a good question.
And I'm sure I give the status relationship with the local mental health agencies, such as Northern Community Services. To know that, when you get to the end of your road, that the person has a mental health issue, you know where to refer them to.
Yeah.
So, the connection's there. It's not like you just say, "Hey, we're done."
And the seven years that I've been there, I've seen, you know, this go to this. We can't, we can't separate the two. The, the fire department, the PB, first responders, you know, one of the things I'm passionate about is helping, helping them ease their workload, because you're dealing with both. And, you know, it's really, it's a problem. So, you know, there's, there's projects I'm working on right now that really want to support the first responders and maybe have somebody follow up. You know, there's a couple of different plans, because, to be honest, the system that the state has doesn't work up here as much as it does down in Manchester, Nashville. You know, we, we're up here, we're kind of left to figure it out ourselves. And we get told, "This is going to work." Doesn't work, then we got to figure it out ourselves, so, it's something to work on.
I would offer that, and it really doesn't require any action on the council yet, I would offer that you allow me to begin this conversation and then come back to you folks with the formal proclamation or resolution, what needs to be done. So I could shoot an email to get this going.
If the governor's office gets back to me, and then we sit down and we do this again with whoever you want, and I go over the process.
I don't think it requires council action at this point, because we're not going to take any steps, so...
Can you take council action? Say, "Let's get that letter done."
Yeah, I mean, you could take council action to, his motion to direct the city manager to take all steps necessary to complete the recovery-friendly workplace program.
May I be of the ball, or anything?
No, you, I'm in general, you could, I'm just throwing that out there. Or you could have me come back. I would prefer the second one, because it lets me do more and get more done, instead of having to do a little bit, come back. This way, I can do the whole thing, come back to you with a bow and say, "Hey, it's all done. Would you go over this?" And we can get the window sticker and publicize and move on.
I'd prefer that.
Yeah. And the city manager person?
He's going to make me remove that motion. I got a little bit of a break today, sorry. So the motion would be to authorize the city manager to take all steps necessary to complete the recovery-friendly workplace program.
You're not looking for that?
Yeah. So that's a some move.
Yes. Seconded by Counselor Corson. Discussion? And then we can show support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Council move. Awesome. Great. Thank you for...
Thank you.
Yeah, we have some emails to take off, but I didn't even accomplish them. He went around canvassing the area with the...
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you. Thank you, guys, and I'm really, I'm excited. So I'll let my people know that, you know, we're going to move forward with this. And thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thanks for the... All right, moving on, next on to the work session. Set phone times and location. That is...
That is me.
That's you.
So, per state law, council has to take a motion to set the polling hours and locations for these, for the state primary. So for a recent vote, we have two voting locations. One will be the Recreation Center, distant to the DFW. And both will open at 8:00 AM, and it goes at 7:00 PM. Come on, please, will you, please?
I'll move that motion. Seconded by Counselor Corson. Any discussion?
We don't perceive the consolidation being a factor and taking longer and having to say open. I'm assuming we've been trying to, probably get all this done in the time frame we have.
Yeah, because we're going to have extra machines in, too, right? Do you have a small machine on now?
No, we still want the same machines, so we'll just add extra power.
Oh, okay. And that's important, you know.
I have a question, if I may, Your Honor. If it's a long line toward the end of the day, you have the authority given to you by the Secretary of State to open until it's longer, if you do not?
Hopefully so. I would like to check that. I think we can let anybody that's in line at 7:00.
Yeah.
Finish voting, but we can't extend the hours.
Thank you.
That was my understanding as well. So send a DM, whoever's physically in that line, you bring them in, and you will close the door.
Any further discussion from the council?
I think it's just a reminder that the Secretary of State likes to have city council members at the polling places all day long. I plan on volunteering and running about.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, as you said, moving on to the tax deferral discharge.
So you have in your packet a tax deferral discharge for 88 Prospect Street in Berlin, map 129, WAP 5, in the amount of $13,981.33. And that is for tax deferrals for our year 2011, '12, and '13. What that means is, we were paid the $13,981.33 plus any applicable interest. And all I would ask is that the council approve the tax deferral discharge as presented.
All right. A motion from the table, from Counselor Burton, and seconded by Counselor Corson, to approve the tax deferral discharge as presented. No discussion? There could be no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on, certificate of vote.
That's me. There's actually two tonight, and really good news. We were awarded $250,000 from the Business of Economic Affairs to tear down 745 Main Street by Birch. It's a real win, because that is going to be a really big project, and it's going to get rid of what is a real hazard, an ICER, here in the city. And then, we are also coming in as an agent for the Northwoods Mobile Home Cooperative. They tore down a mobile home and finished kind of completing all the disposal related to the mobile home that experienced a fire last year. And so, that's a really small grant, that's just, I think, $9,000. But we're just acting as a pass-through for them, because it has to come to the municipality.[1750.71] So I'm going to read this just once, but ask for two separate votes. So one for 745 Main and by Birch, and then a second one for Northwoods Mobile Home Cooperative. So this is authorizing the city manager to do a few things. It's a certificate of authority. At a council meeting held on August 5th, the city council will vote to authorize the city of Berlin through its city manager to apply for, accept, and expend money from governmental or private sources, which may become available during the year according to procedures set forth in law. Second, at a regular meeting of the Berlin City Council held on August 5th, the council votes to accept municipal, uh, municipal per unit grant for the, so this is the 745 Main and five Birch street project first, which is actually already identified as MP 22-152, and to enter into a grant contract with the New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs subject to the governor and executive council approval. The city council will further authorize the city manager to execute any documents and perform any other acts necessary or convenient to cause the city to enter into this contract with the VDA. Third, the following person has been elected or appointed and now occupies the office of city manager, and that would be one Philabel Warren Jr. Fourth, the authorizations described in this certificate have not been revoked and never amended in any manner whatsoever and remain in full force and effect as of the date hereof and will remain effective for 30 days after the date of this certificate. And this will be signed by our own city clerk, Kelly Ford. So the first one, 745 Main and five Birch, and then a second vote for the Northwoods Mobile Home Cooperative.
So move for the first one.
All right, so we're going to pay with the council eight for 745 Main and five Birch. Second by Councilor Bage. Discussion.
Question, um, yes, sir. Yeah. Where is this building located on Main Street?
Frank Ross from the Lighthouse Credit Union, the old Demos Drag Cleaning Building.
Yep, okay, thank you.
If I could, real quick, our plan's out of demolish that building, make a pocket park there. We're going to loan it, cede it, which is not part of the demolition, but we're going to dress it up nice and put a couple of benches there because a lot of people walk from, past the courthouse down to the Riverwalk, and this is a nice stop, especially if you're like me and you let your stomach guide you in the tight spaces right there. But it is, it's, it's a nice stop. It is not something that is conducive for putting another single family or multiple one year old in, and that's all that it's for.
What about the education program?
Here?
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion on the first motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Moving on to, who's it, North?
Second vote for the Northwoods Mobile Home Cooperative.
Motion for, so I got a motion from Councilor, second by Councilor Corson for Northwoods Mobile Park. Discussion? We brought this up the last time. There's no liability on that part, right? Just a pass through on this?
We were just passing through. This one actually is even easier than CDSA and CBPG because it's just a one-time check that's going to come and going to go to them.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion from the council? No? Moving on, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Moving on, we have currently nothing under other. We do have the non-public that we discussed that we're going to do at the end of the regular meeting.
Yep.
And so that, all right, let's take a five-minute recess and we'll be right in. Couple of carriers tonight. And the pledge of allegiance. Now, the fourth, you, please welcome the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all. Madam Clerk, hold on.
Councilor Paul. Yeah, Councilor.
Yeah.
Councilor Corson.
Yeah.
Councilor Judge.
Present. Here. Next on the agenda is the minutes for the regular meeting and work session for July 15, 2024.
Your Honor, I recommend a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting and work session held on July 15, 2024.
All right, your motion on the floor, Councilor Bage, and second by Councilor Bage to approve the minutes for the regular meeting and the work session for July 15, 2024. Is there any discussion? There could be no further discussion. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up, disbursements. Madam Clerk.
Check disbursement report number 1966 to the start date of July 16, 2024, and the date of August 5, 2024, for a total disbursement of $1,394,648.48.
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion to accept Madam Clerk's disbursement report as presented, and to pay all bills reviewed and approved by the committee on the council plans.
All right, your motion on the floor from Councilor Bage, second by Councilor Corson to approve, uh, the disbursement report, Madam Clerk, of $1,394,648.48. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all bills. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make some public comments or address the council?
Uh, yes, I do. I'd like to address the thing on Main Street, the property there that was just got, um, was going to be torn down.
Would you mind stating your name and your address for the council, please?
Yes, Andre Bergeron. Really, we don't need more sitting areas, but we do definitely need more parking spaces. Like, um, Abenaki Lane has no parking spaces for their houses, um, especially for, um, for Abenaki Lane and some apartment buildings there have no parking spaces, along with a couple on Main Street.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? All right, moving on to unfinished business. Are there any council committee reports? Any reports? Moving on to new business. First up is Resolution 2024-18 across the WAC Col tree and disabled parking space at City Hall. Madam Clerk.
In your regard, Lord, 2024, the resolution of mending the city of Berlin's fourth consists specifically 15-40 crosswalks by adding an authorized crosswalk on Col Street from the northern side of the city home parking lot to 15 Col Street, and by mending section 15-79 parking spaces reserved for the disabled by adding a parking space reserved for disabled persons only in front of City Hall. resolved by the city council of the city of Berlin as follows. Whereas the traffic and safety committee received an request to add an aforementioned crosswalk and disabled parking space, and the committee endorsed such changes since July 15, 2024. Whereas pursuant to the city of Berlin's code of ordinances, section 15-40 crosswalks and section 15-79 is amended by a resolution. Now therefore, we have resolved that the city council and the city of Berlin provide amendments to the city of Berlin's ordinances, specifically section 15-40, to include an authorized crosswalk on Col Street from the northern side of the city home parking lot to 15 Col Street, and to furthermore amend the city's ordinances, specifically section 15-79 parking spaces reserved for the disabled, indicating two disabled parking spaces reserved in front of City Hall. This resolution shall be in full force and effective on passage. Your Honor, this is the council's second resolution to 2024-18 tabled in the Republican Committee for August 19.
Second.
My motion by Councilor Burton, second by Councilor Bigby. The resolutions for 2024 being tabled, and the Republican's scheduled, what was the date again?
August 19.
August, for August 19. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2024-18 has been tabled and scheduled a public hearing on August 19. All right, moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here's my PSAs again. As a reminder, residents, it's a violation of the municipal law to park an unregistered motor vehicle or trailer on the city street. This is also a violation of the city ordinances to have more than one uninspected motor vehicle on residential property. Second, trash and recycling shall be placed at the current by 7:00 AM on the scheduled pickup day, not the night before. Trash and recycling shall not be left out the night or day before. There have been instances of late where trash was placed out the night before and early, creating an attractive nuisance for bears, raccoons, and other animals. Alpha Street was repaired and paved last week. This was part of the December 2023 storm repairs. The Federal Emergency Management Agency will be regressing the city for this repair. Kent Street sustained damage during the recent water break, and we are using this opportunity to address some of the drainage issues and drainage condition issues. Waterworks will be replacing the water main for Darrell Street early next year. We will work on the drainage and then final pave from a pavement cut at Darrell Street. Due to the cost of paving, we will be completing 12th Street and Madison Avenue from Emery Street to Hillside Avenue. We are planning on shin coating sections of Grafton Street in anticipation of chip sealing in the summer of 2025. We rarely should consider supplementing the amount allocated for pavement management as costs of old chip sealing and asphalt paving are increasing. At present, we are allocating $450,000 for this budget year. To make some significant progress, we really, we should consider allocating at least $700,000 annually, when the plan was amended, paving costs were against $50 per ton less. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Your Honor, I made a motion to approve the city manager's report that has been, I think, seconded by Councilor Bage, seconded by Councilor Bage, who took the city manager's report that is left. Discussion?
Any more for the discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the mayor's report. They have a letter here from, uh, Ms. Tammy Hansen regarding, uh, some memorial mention of trees. I want to do a copy of this letter as well. Uh, I just want to read it for her suggestion for memorial sites. Uh, block one, Riverwalk on the riverside, across the bike lane, uh, signed just before the picketing cables at the bridge, peaceful spot looking at the water. My mother's step, uh, my mother's stepfather. Two benches, one big flower covering an apple tree. Uh, block two, dead river, walnut near stone. There's grass, these spots looking over the water. One bench, one white crab apple tree for a childhood friend. Block number three, the Nancy Wayside area, in the area of Memorial Rock for Al Patterson. Two benches and one sugar maple for my father and grandfather. And four, Brown School Brasserie area in front, one bench, one crab apple tree for my daughters and father. It was brought to my attention that this is a bus stop. Uh, I would be open to making a donation that helps the city if they wanted to put a shelter with a place to sit instead of the park bench. I believe it's a tri cammy bus stop. And then are there any special requirements for these benches? Will the city even down the electric? For your letter, Tammy. Yes, sir. Mr. Morton.
On these items, I would like to note to the council that I have over 80 open Public Works work orders at this point. We are still fixing quality damage and damage from the April storm. Every time we get a rainstorm, it puts us five days behind on that work because we have to clean everything up. While I support these in theory, what I can't support is having Public Works install and maintain them at this time. I'm also down a few positions in Public Works, and that's because it's becoming increasingly high to find commercial drivers or training with odd staff to become personal drivers, but at this point, we have nowhere near the bandwidth to do any of this.
Councilor Bage.
I'm kind of confused by the letter. Is she asking us, I think, no, she's asking for itself. Is she asking personally for this? Or is she proposing she's buying the benches and trees?
So she, it started with one tree, really got away from her. But nevertheless, she is proposing she pays for all trees and all benches.
The second part is we, we have to take, before we just, you know, determine we don't have time for Public Works, um, I think we have to take some careful consideration and do many more of these requests, I'm sorry, and where some precedents we want to set.
Correct. Councilor Morton.
Yeah, I have a, um, we've had some requests for other capable volunteers and, and different things, and what is the process of this? I mean, it's one thing to send a letter and, and say that I'll pay for it, but how do we, how do we process and prove like we do with the parks?
That could be. Yes. So we don't really have a process. A lot of communities don't have a process to take on a case-by-case basis. And if we were in a different position, then I would support these a lot of it. And it's not so much the purchases of the tree, it's the installation and maintenance. It's the installation and maintenance of the bench. And as was stated, I'm sorry, someone else stated, Diane, who stated it, that it's requests coming forward as well, because, um, just with limited staff, unfortunately, work orders that deep, I have to comment on this. Normally, I would support something with this and figure it out. Unfortunately, with Public Works, it has to be written out stage, the waters, you know.
We had had some other requests coming for us and then when we were doing the Riverwalk, and you know, I think of, and then, hopefully, Bage would as well, you know, somebody, and we weren't sure how to get a quote, and I don't think just sending a letter requesting is the way that we should be handled, because we got different parts and we have to deal with it. You know, we certainly support, deserve to be recognized, but how do we do that fair?
So in the past, my youth counselor, Valerino, was a good one. You know, his example is someone who actually did quite a bit for the city. Lots of people knew him, and this was Councilor Valerino's way to honor what he had done for us. Almost all the requests that have come in the past have been for someone who either has some sort of significant like service to the city or someone who meant a lot, like Bobby Hager in his bench, like the firefighters union purchased, I think it was union, correct? Um, and installed by the fire station. And so like those we've done in the past, but they're very few and far between, and it's case-by-case basis, and there hasn't really been a formal process. I mean, I know one of the things, um, you know, until there's funds to purchase a bench, for instance, that Council Valerino might, you know, have to raise those funds. That's kind of how that goes because we normally haven't been the purchaser of any of those memorials either.
So I mean, you could suppose at some point, it's not like an immediate need, but look at perhaps creating a process or just continuing these parking spaces.
Councilor Corson.
Is there a requirement that Public Works install these benches? Is that what we want to do? Or is it something that if somebody wanted to hire somebody else to go on installation and stuff like that, that we would, it would be brought to us? Is there a?
There, there is. I have no problem with it at all as long as we get a chance to, the person that's installing it. In the case of benches, there isn't a lot of maintenance to them, but it has to be done with, you know, a discussion that states what happens if the bench gets damaged. A lot of times, if they're a man's bench, you know they're not damaging, but it's still accounted. That's the concern. The tree's concerning more because there's ongoing maintenance with the tree. There's a lot of, you know, taking care of it. They're replacing it, you know, if something happened. That then would be on Public Works unless we had an agreement that said the person or the group or the entity would be responsible for the tree. And I've worked with communities with those agreements. They're usually good for about 12 to 18 months after the tree's planted and then, or the garden, or the refuge area that's very well, you know, the garden that's been built up. It doesn't become detained anymore, and then becomes a problem that the municipal has to take care of. One suggestion might be is that folks are steered towards the garden, the downtown folks, and maybe the garden club and city they could come up with, you know, a presentation to the city that would say, we'd like to put that thing. Why would install it and see we maintain it? Because those are two established groups, as you all know, that are in for a long term.
Oh, okay, can I, I'm sorry, remember thing. I could actually explain to her that you guys had jurisdiction over Nancy Wayside because that's in Lee and Mylan. So you can actually make a determination on that request, but only on the other requests that she.
make a determination on that request, but only on the other requests that she made.
So if I go off on, if we take the vote to accept it, I have no problem having staff respond back to her that says we can't do Nancy, we're considering, but that there's a concern about, you know, who's gonna install and maintain.
Yep. We'll move over to that, and respond back to them.
Okay.
As she said. Alright, so I have a current motion from Councilor Corson, except there is a report as read, seconded by Councilor Blas. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? Is there any other public comments?
I did have one more.
Yes, sir. I get the safety station name you're addressing.
Yep, Andre Bergeron, again, I did wanted to bring up the fact that we don't have, like, much recreational activities around the area for children, and I know it's one of, um, one of the things that causes our kids to be, come, more haywired and getting themselves in more trouble when there's not much to do for them. So, I was thinking, maybe we could try to discuss about bringing, like, more, maybe more advanced parks into the town, stuff like that, like, update our parks, um, potentially. I know there was a couple people that brought up in the past, uh, um, an arcade center, which I think the city kind of turned them away on that. Um, which, I think it would actually be good, if you give them, uh, a place for our kids to hang out, um, get to keep out of trouble. No, but that's all.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bergeron, if you could give us your address, give us your name.
I, I could give you Second Ave. I'll give you Second Ave, I live on Second Ave, I don't want to state my street number because I'm recording the sessions, and I want my home address public.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burke. Alright, any further public comments this evening? Moving on to Councilor Valerino. I'm ready, Councilor Blas.
Well, wait, if there are council comments, we'll get them.
Just a quick one, uh, I know that, you know, Councilman, uh, sorry, it's angry, he is, he represents the city on the ER, the EDP, and his government valley, regional, he's a postal district, and I represent the county, we've been, uh, looking at a company to take to, uh, and we addressed, we actually found an organization, a company, similar to what the city is doing for our website, so I'll give you more information on that, so that we're transparent. We haven't been, that was one of the issues that Councilman Corson and I had with our board, so that is, that's the process, which will probably be finalized in private suits.
Is there anybody else's comment?
So, Mr. Mayor, because we've amended our schedule tonight, the, instead of a motion to adjourn, the motion would be to enter into non-public session for 91-8, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversity, the reputation of any person, and we would not be returning any two open seats. So move.
Second.
And a motion by Councilor Higgin, seconded by Councilor Corson, and move to a roll call. Yeah. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Pauls? Councilor? Councilor? Councilor Corson? Councilor Strachan? Yes.
Yes.